Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'd now like to call to order this special joint County of Gray meeting with all councils present on March 21st, 2025. At this point in time, as you're able, please stand and join us for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. At this point in time, we will begin the roll call. And what I will do is I will look to each of the municipalities, the member municipalities. I will look to the clerk to provide us with the account of those who are present from each lower tier council. So we'll begin with the township of Chatsworth and I'll look to CAO and clerk Patty Cinnamon.
Good morning, Madam Warden. From the township of Chatsworth, Mayor Scott Mackey is present, Deputy Mayor Terry McKay, and Counselor Liz Thompson.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll look to the township of Georgian Bluffs. So I'll look to clerk Craig.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning. We have Mayor Sue Carlton, Counselor Kathy Moore Coburn, Counselor Rick Winters in attendance. We are expecting Counselor Isaac Shuldice, but I do not see him online as of yet. For minute-taking purposes, staff present include myself and CAO Niall Lawley.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the municipality of Gray Highlands. We'll look to clerk Van Alstein.
Good morning and through you, Madam Warden. We have an attendance today. Mayor McQueen, Counselor Allen, Counselor Allwood, Counselor Dubic, Counselor Lowhead, and Counselor Wickens.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll go to the town of Hanover. I'll look to clerk McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This morning, my apology, my video won't start. This morning, we have Mayor Sue Patterson, Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert, Counselor Susan Sackle, and Counselor Harold Fleet in attendance.
Thank you. And we'll go to the municipality of Meaford and we'll look to clerk Wilton Siegel.
Good morning. Thank you. We have all elected members present with the exception of Counselor Bell.
Thank you. And the city of Owen Sound. I'll look to clerk Bloomfield.
Thank you. Through the warden, all members of Owen Sound Council are present except for Counselor Kukrazia.
Thank you. And next we'll go to the township of Southgate and I'll look to clerk Green.
Good morning, Madam Warden. We have our mayor, Brian Milne, Deputy Mayor Barbara Dobrine, Counselor Jim Ferguson, and Counselor Joan John. Mayor Milne is just having a bit of connection issues, but he should be back momentarily.
Thank you. And next to the town of Blue Mountains, we'll look to clerk Giles.
Good morning, Madam Warden. Town of Blue Mountains has Counselor Ardell present, Deputy Mayor Bordenio, Counselor Maxwell, Counselor McKinley, Counselor Porter. Counselor Hope is absent today and our mayor is attending as the warden today. Thank you.
Thank you. And the municipality of West Gray. I'll look to clerk Atkins Willer.
Good morning and through you, Madam Warden. From West Gray, present are Deputy Mayor Tom Hutchinson, Counselor Doug Hutchinson, Counselor Doug Townsend, Counselor Scott Forrester, Counselor Jeffrey Shea, and absent are Mayor Kevin Echols and Counselor Joyce Noonan.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Gray County land acknowledgement. We would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Inishinnabik Nation, the people of the three fires known as the Ojibwe, the Odawa, and the Potawatomi nations. And further, we give thanks to the Chipewas of Saugin and the Chipewas of Nawash, known collectively as Saugin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. To our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. Item number five is a declaration of interest, so I'll put it out there right now. If there are any declarations, please indicate by raising a virtual hand. Okay, seeing no hands raised, we will move on then to the adoption of the agenda and procedures. Gray County will maintain all records of this meeting. This assembly today is one large body and a quorum is 50% plus one of all elected officials across Gray County. Any votes taken today will be determined by a simple majority vote, and we are all acting together during this meeting. All elected officials here today have the opportunity to speak and vote. Okay, so with that then, we will move on to the recommended motion. It is, and I'll look for a mover and a seconder and I'll ask for a virtual hand to go up for that. So I'll read out the recommended motion. It's recommended that the special Gray County Joint All Council Meeting adopts the contents of the agenda as presented in Gray County procedural bylaw 513422 to govern the procedure of its March 21st, 2025 joint meeting of Gray County and all the municipalities of the town of the Blue Mountains, the city of Owen Sound, the township of Georgian Bluffs, the municipality of Meaford, the township of Chatsworth, the municipality of Gray Highlands, the town of Hanover, the municipality of West Gray, and the township of Southgate. And that quorum shall be determined by 50% plus one of all elected officials across Gray County and that votes taken be determined by a simple majority vote. And in order to facilitate the number that we have here being represented, when we come to a vote, I will simply ask if there are any opposed, and then I'll ask for any hands to be raised if there are any opposed. And the clerks who are managing the votes in the chamber can respond by putting a virtual hand and we'll check in with the clerks at that point in time. Okay, so with that then, may I ask for a mover and a seconder? Okay, so I see I have it moved by Tom Hutchinson, who is Deputy Mayor of West Gray, but also Counselor of Gray County, and seconded by, sorry, the hands keep moving here, seconded by Terry McKay, Deputy Mayor of Chatsworth and County Counselor. Okay, so thank you very much. So it is now moved and it's on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no hands up, I'll ask, are there any opposed? Please raise a virtual hand. Okay, Madam Clerk, I see no virtual hands raised, therefore I declare that this motion has passed.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to item number seven, which is the adoption of the minutes as we had had a previous meeting last summer. So the special Gray County Joint All Council Meeting minutes dated August 8th, 2024. It's recommended that the special Gray County Joint All Council Meeting minutes dated August 8th, 2024 be approved as presented. May I get a mover and a seconder? I see it moved by Deputy Mayor Dobrine of Southgate, also Counselor Dobrine, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Dickert of Hanover, also Counselor Dickert at County level. Okay, it's now been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no hands up for discussion, I'll ask, are there any opposed? Madam Clerk, I see no hands raised to be opposed. Okay, next we'll move on to item eight, which is the report. The recommendation for consideration in the staff report that will be presented is as follows. It is recommended that report PDR S J M 1925 be received and that correspondence be sent to each member municipality in Gray County requesting any interested municipality to indicate its support in principle for a hybrid planning service delivery model by no later than May 9th, 2025. May I ask for a mover with a virtual hand? Thank you. It's moved by Mayor Mackey of Chatsworth, also Gray County Counselor, seconded by Mayor Patterson of Hanover, also County Counselor. So it's been moved and seconded is now on the floor for discussion. What we will do first is we will look to the deputy CAO and then he will then, after an introduction, he will look to Director Taylor for a presentation and then we will begin a discussion of questions and questions for clarification with staff here present. So with that, Deputy CAO Schertz, sir, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Warden Madrasos, and good morning, everyone. Thank you all for joining the meeting today. We wanted to bring all the local municipal councils together again just to provide an update on the centralized hybrid planning services model investigation so that everyone can hear the update at the same time and to also ask any clarification questions as it relates to the staff report. We're going to provide an overview of the questions and comments received from each of the local municipalities and I want to thank those municipalities for being able to provide those comments. We truly appreciate you taking the time to provide the initial feedback on this proposed model. Through the overview, we're going to also identify how we think those comments and questions can be addressed through either changes to the proposed model as well as some next steps through further investigations and discussions with the local municipalities. What we'll do is we'll go through the entire presentation and then we'll open it up for any clarification questions at the end of the presentation. Just wanted to highlight, there's no formal decisions regarding the implementation of the potential model are being recommended or being discussed or considered today. What staff are recommending is that this report be received and that correspondence be sent to each municipality requesting any interested municipality to indicate their support in principle for a hybrid planning service delivery model by no later than May 9th. From a staff perspective, we just need to know what municipalities are supportive of the model in principle so that we can develop the potential staffing model, the financial model, as well as understand further specific service delivery expectations from the interested municipalities. It should be noted that municipalities will not be committing to participation in the model through that in-principle support. Municipalities will be given the opportunity later in the process to fully opt in or opt out following that detailed financial review and following those further discussions with each of the municipalities. Again, part of the next steps, which we'll get into later on the presentation, is developing a draft memorandum of understanding, which we will discuss further in the presentation. Next slide, Scott. So just to recap why this model is even being investigated. So in February of 2024, Gray County staff presented a report to county council with input from member municipal staff, and we prepared a series of planning process efficiency recommendations in that staff report. That report was supported by county council and was shared with each of the member municipalities. And I'm pleased to say that many of the efficiencies identified in that report have since been implemented at the county and municipal levels. Stemming from that planning efficiency work, staff were directed to research other planning service delivery models. And so through some closed and open session staff reports, we provided information on alternative service delivery models, including a centralized service model. Municipalities again provided feedback on a centralized service delivery model through staff reports and council resolutions. And we're asked for that initial input as part of those early investigations of this potential model. And again, thank you for all for taking the time to go through that with your councils and staff and for discussing this potential model. There was a public webpage that was developed on the county's website to get public and developer feedback. And staff did receive some written and verbal feedback on the service delivery model, some of which were supportive of investigating the model further. Others were not supportive of the model and were happy with the current services that are delivered at both the county and municipal levels. And others were supportive of the model for some municipalities that have, say, smaller planning departments, but were happy with status quo for municipalities that have larger staff complements. Next slide, please, Scott. So we wanted to provide a bit of a recap on some of the potential efficiencies we might see from the proposed service delivery model. One of the potential efficiencies is avoiding any potential duplication of review and processing efforts by having a single planner and planning department receive and process applications. And this would be applications like a subdivision application or an associated zoning amendment for a single proposed development. It could be then just one planner reviewing all those applications that are associated with that development. Right now, as council staff are aware, rather than having both municipal and county planners reading the same application materials, it could be potentially being done by one single planner. Another potential efficiency is efficient one-stop customer service for inquiries and applications. So rather than having to speak with both municipal and county staff, landlords could speak with a single planning department to get answers to their planning questions. We also think through the new model, we could have more in-house policy expertise. That could lead to less use of consultants and greater retention of institutional knowledge. Another potential efficiency is the ability to better share information between municipalities. Most planning issues are not unique to one municipality. And as such, if a municipality develops a solution under a centralized model and can share with another municipality, this saves all municipalities time and money in finding solutions to challenges and problems that are common to each of us. Another potential efficiency is just greater resiliency to both staffing changes and in times where we see higher and lower volumes of development applications, be able to adjust and have some flexibility in those situations. So again, by having a larger team, the proposed model would make individual municipalities less susceptible to delays where a planner may leave a municipality or is off for an extended absence, especially in cases where a municipality has one or two planners. In peak times, more staff could be allocated to development files in a given municipality, whereas in slower times, staff could be allocated in another municipality or to policy planning or research. Another potential efficiency is the ability to attract and retain staff who may wish to be part of a larger planning team and to see growth within a single organization. Having a larger team covering a broader geography may also give opportunities for a wider array of planning issues. So that's another potential opportunity. Another opportunity is the ability to provide greater peer-to-peer mentoring and career development as well as some training opportunities or conferences where we could, especially for conferences that offer group discounts. So having a larger planning team may allow the county and participating municipalities to utilize these discounts and to offer in-house training where there's a critical mass to do so. So we have some further details to work out with the proposed model, but we want to highlight the potential efficiencies and benefits that could be seen through this proposed model. Next slide, please, Scott. So a summary of the questions and comments from the municipalities, including a county staff response, are provided in appendix one to the staff report. We'll highlight some of the key common areas of questions and concerns that in today's presentation and how we think those can be addressed. But if you haven't had a chance to review all the comments and questions and responses in that appendix, and it is a large document, so it may take a bit to go through, but we would encourage everyone to do so. Some of the common areas of questions or concerns received from the municipalities include impact on other municipal departments and other roles served by planners. So most development applications require coordination with various staff, whether it's engineering staff or engineering consultants, public work staff, building staff, as well as others. And it was noted that the model would need to be designed to ensure that the relationships and processes with other local municipal staff are maintained. It was also noted that municipal planners perform other roles beyond just development application review and policy work and wanting to ensure that the model will continue to provide those services and again, which those can be discussed further with municipalities as part of the next steps. In terms of service delivery, customer service impacts include location and timing of service. So when it comes to service standards, these would be detailed through what we would consider the draft memorandum of understandings with each of the municipalities. And we'd work with those municipalities to ensure that the service is being delivered meets the expectations of the municipality. And Scott will provide some further details regarding these proposed MOUs. Another comment we heard is about application processing and approvals. And in terms of approvals, no approval authorities would change under this new model. So municipal councils and committees would still make the same decisions that they currently do as well as county council would still make the decisions that they currently do on planning applications. Under the new model, the proposal will be that all applications would be submitted to the county so that way they can be processed and administered centrally. Another comment we heard is around communications and reporting to staff and councils and committees. And the proposed memorandum of understanding would spell out the communication chain between municipal staff and the centralized planning staff. And this could include things like regular communications and meetings at the director of senior levels to ensure that the services are continuing to meet expectations and then to make any adjustments if necessary. We also heard some comments around things like financial considerations, IT considerations, municipal record-keeping and human resource matters, timelines and transitional considerations. What do agreements and legal matters look like, as well as questions around this, the memorandum of understanding, as well as some other comments and questions. And these matters will be part of the next steps, including further discussions and analysis with each of those municipalities who are supportive in principle of the model. And again, Scott will talk about this further in the presentation. I just wanted to note too that the town of Blue Mountains did pass a motion opting out of the centralized planning service delivery model and just want to thank town council and staff for reviewing the potential model and putting forward the staff report and comments. I'll now turn it over to Scott to go through the rest of the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Randy, and good morning to everybody. So I will just move on to the next slide here. So after, as Randy mentioned, we had the initial discussions last summer and we got that round of municipal feedback in that regard. And similar to Randy's comments, I would thank all the municipalities, both council and staff for their very thoughtful feedback in that regard. After that initial feedback was received, county staff presented a report to county council, P D R C W 6324, to seek additional direction from county council on investigating service delivery models. When we first started this discussion last year, the proposal at that time was a centralized model, including all nine municipalities and the county working together under a central system. However, as Randy noted, there was some questions and concerns with the model and there was also one municipality that opted out of the centralized model. As such, county staff went back to county council seeking direction to investigate a hybrid model. And at that time, staff hadn't asked municipalities to opt in or opt out per se, but based on some discussions with staff and some of the feedback received, county staff thought that there might be approximately two-thirds of the nine municipalities that would be considering a model, which we thought would still have significant benefit and critical mass to supporting a hybrid model in that regard. Through that November 2024 staff report, county council gave direction to continue to investigate this model as well as to set up a further joint council meeting, which is the meeting we're in right now. I will say there is precedent for hybrid models across the province and most locally Wellington County currently uses a hybrid model where they provide local and county planning services to some of their municipalities and some of their municipalities are under a two-tier system where there's planners at the local and county level. So what does a hybrid model look like potentially for Gray County? For Gray County under hybrid model, some municipalities would opt in to participate in the hybrid model. And for those municipalities that do opt in and sign those memorandums of understanding, as Randy was talking about, the county would provide both county and local planning services to those municipalities. For those municipalities that chose to opt out of the model, the planning system would remain status quo and we would continue with the existing two-tier service delivery model in that regard. For those municipalities that opt in, as I said, we would need to dig further into those future memorandums of understanding to spell out the service delivery terms between the county and member municipalities. And I will say in that regard, we wouldn't be recreating the wheel here. We've talked to some of our colleagues in other counties who are willing to share examples of their existing memorandums of understanding that we could use as a template to create a maiden Gray memorandum in that regard. And those memorandums would generally largely be similar between each participating municipality. But we know that there will be some service delivery needs that might be unique to one municipality or there might be some service delivery needs that may vary by municipality. So across our nine municipalities right now, they all have different service levels in their planning department. Some don't have a full-time municipal planner. Some don't have a planning service at the counter five days a week, whereas others do. So we see these future memorandums of understanding as the ability to dig into what those service delivery needs are and the ability to offer each of the participating municipalities in-office service delivery at the level that they require and that's negotiated through those memorandums of understanding in that regard. Sorry. Okay, on to the next slide. So based on the feedback received, one of the key comments, and Randy touched on this in his slides, is the importance of relationship building. And that relationship building is often between the planners and the other departments, as Randy mentioned, public works or your roads department or parks and recreation. But there's also the importance of relationship building between the planners and municipal councils or municipal committees in that regard. So with respect to the service delivery that would be offered to participating municipalities that have opted into this hybrid model, staff would look to have as much consistency as possible with planning staff serving those individual municipalities. So if your municipality said that you wanted in-person service, you know, three days a week, as much as possible, we would try to have similar names and faces in there for that in-person service. So those relationships could be, in some cases, continued and in other cases strengthened. However, one of the benefits to the hybrid model and all working together in this regard would be having a little bit of extra flexibility in this regard. Randy touched on this as well, but simply put, if one municipality were to get extra busy with their development or policy work and there was another municipality that was less busy at that time period, maybe you'd need to bring more staff into the busy municipality and have a lesser staffing complement for the municipality that's not as busy. Or similarly, if you had a municipality where the county planner took a job elsewhere or perhaps went on parental leave, then you have those abilities to hopefully fill that that short-term gap with a planner that's already working under the county model. So that's one of those key benefits whereby if you're an existing municipality that has a single incumbent planner and that planner leaves or goes on a leave, then you have no planning resources in this regard. So by working together as a team, we see the ability to help supplement the needs during peak and valley times in that regard. As Randy mentioned, it is crucial to note that under the hybrid model, the approval authority is not changing. So municipal councils would still approve zoning amendments, committees of adjustment would still approve minor variances, site plans would still be delegated to staff as per the requirements of the Planning Act, and the county would still continue to approve those applications that the county already does, including county official plan amendments, municipal official plan amendments, and subdivisions and condominiums, with the exception of the city of Owen Sound, who has slightly different approval roles in that regard. As Randy mentioned, for those municipalities that opt into this hybrid model, the applications would be filed directly with the county and those in theory could be filed digitally or they could be filed either at the county offices or the municipal offices. We want to make it as easy as possible for those that are utilizing the system. We want to make it as easy as possible for those that are utilizing the system, whether you be a developer or a resident filing a system, or whether you be an interested party that's looking to learn more about planning or provide comments on a planning application or policy matter in that regard. For our status quo municipalities that might choose to opt out of the hybrid service delivery model, the county would still be a commenting body on municipal applications and would still continue to be that approval body where that relationship already exists. And as Randy mentioned, and I'll probably say this about three more times in my presentation today, there's still lots of additional details to be investigated in this new model, including the financials, the IT, the legal, the service levels, et cetera. And simply put, we couldn't determine all those details just yet until we understand who's going to be a part of this model and who might not be a part of the model should municipal councils and county councils see fit to proceed with a hybrid service delivery model in that regard. And so with that, following that November report and some additional research, staff met, county staff met with the municipal CAOs and had a separate meeting with the municipal planners early in twenty-two-five. As part of that meeting, staff wanted to provide personal responses to the thoughtful feedback we got in the later parts of twenty-two-four. And we had shared with both the CAOs and the municipal planners, a version of what you see in appendix one attached to the report today, such that both at the CEO level and at the staff, planning staff level, they could see some of the early responses to those, those comments that were put forward by the municipalities. With respect to the CAOs, the feedback we got from the CAOs at that, at that meeting early this year, there was a number of the municipal CAOs that saw merit in proceeding with further investigations. At the very least, it would inform both municipal and county councils' future decision-making on this topic. Some noted that their read of their municipal councils was that they would be in support of a centralized or hybrid planning service delivery model. Others noted that their councils still had some outstanding questions and maybe some concerns that they'd like to see further investigated. As Randy has noted, Town of Blue Mountains Council had already opted out of the new model, so their CAO shared that feedback in that regard. With respect to the feedback we got from the municipal planning staff, it was, it was a great discussion, a spirited discussion. And there were some that either in that discussion or through subsequent emails or phone calls expressed support for a new model or a hybrid model. They saw that as potentially beneficial going forward and interesting to be a part of. However, there were a number of municipal planners that had some outstanding questions and concerns with respect to the new model. And staff had expected this, you know, anytime we're looking at a change potentially of this magnitude, there's going to be lots of differing opinions and there's going to be lots of questions and it will take a lot of, a lot more investigation. With respect to some of the questions and concerns we heard from municipal staff in that regard, they're detailed in the report, but I'll just highlight a few of them here now. There were some questions about if we went to this hybrid model or their municipality opted into this hybrid model, would it truly result in more timely planning decisions? Would we see speedier planning decisions in that regard? And what would those final costs be? Would it be more cost-effective? And as Randy's already mentioned, we do still need to further dig into those financials. Some question whether or not a hybrid model, depending on how many municipalities were to join the model, would actually provide adequate staffing at both the development planning levels and the policy planning levels? And whether we had adequate customer service levels at each municipality. Some gave detailed descriptions of the current customer service in person that they have at their municipality and thought that at a minimum, they would want to see their replicated under a new model, which is, which is of course completely understandable. Some of them also talked about the many hats that municipal planners wear as municipal staff. And so while in front of council, you might be most accustomed to seeing some of the development planning applications or some of the policy planning roles. In many cases, municipal staff, just like county staff, are involved in other local municipal committees. They might be involved in some of what we call planning adjacent services, such as maybe development charges inquiries or building inquiries, working with your chief building officials. They might also be involved in reviewing community improvement plan, application submissions. So if the county and some select member municipalities were to go to a hybrid model, how would some of those, what we call planning adjacent service roles be filled in this regard? As we mentioned earlier, there was lots of talk about the existing relationships and in some cases, the relationships that have been built over many years between municipal planners and other planning departments or peer reviewers that serve the development application review process. And staff do see that the need to continue these relationships and strengthen relationships in that regard. We also talked at that meeting about not recreating the wheel. If a municipality already has a wonderful internal review system whereby it's going through, say, an internal development review committee and that's working well, then there might not be a need to make any changes to that scenario in that regard. From a planning perspective, some of the planners also highlighted the need, highlighted the potential for a conflict scenario between two municipalities. And so if you had a county planner working under this new model that's serving municipality X and municipality Y and municipality X and Y, couldn't see eye to eye on a particular planning matter, where would that place the individual municipal staff or county staff person in that regard? Staff also had questions about what happens to those staff that may choose not to join join the hybrid model. And there are some responses to this in the municipal response table. And we've worked very closely with our Director of Human Resources in this regard, Jennifer Moreau, who's also been in touch with municipal HR professionals in that regard, to talk about the options in this regard. As Randy noted, there was talk about IT platforms and if different municipalities are using different software systems or that software is different from the county, how would those softwares communicate with one another? And there was some, some good talk about records management in that regard. There was also questions about whether or not there'd be additional municipal consultation or consultation with developers and the public on a hybrid service delivery model. And there was further inquiries about when a decision would be made and what the timelines for that decision or potential transition would be in that regard. And certainly, we don't have a timeline just yet for any decision and we welcome any feedback through today's discussions or through those future municipal discussions on what a reasonable timeframe might be in that regard. So with respect to some of the next steps and some of the further information that's required, as both Randy and the warden have noted, this joint council isn't being asked to make a decision on the hybrid model here today. Rather, it's to receive the report and to pass it back to the member municipalities for their further consideration at the municipal council table. If the county doesn't receive a in-principle support motion from any given municipality, staff will assume that they're not interested in pursuing the hybrid model at this time and won't include them in some of those further investigation discussions that I'm going to talk about in just a minute here. As Randy mentioned, the in-principle support motion is not a firm commitment, but rather it gives county staff and council an early indicator of who might be interested to start to further flesh out that hybrid model, including the financials, the staffing levels and the various other needs that need to be investigated before individual municipal councils and ultimately county council can make a, can make a decision in that regard. So following the in-principle support motion, staff envision the following next steps. And these are of course subject to change, but this is what we've mapped out at this stage. We've had some, some really great group discussions with municipal CAOs and municipal planners at this stage. But we think to really dig into the details and really dig into those desired service levels at each individual municipality that's potentially participating, we'd set up one-on-one discussions, including the municipal CAO and including the municipal planners or directors in that regard, to talk about what this hybrid model might look like for your municipality. We've talked about drafting those memorandum of understanding templates. And as I said, we could, we could model those off of what some of our neighbors are already doing in that regard and sharing those early on for consideration first and foremost by staff, but then also by county and municipal councils to understand what those service delivery standards would look like in that regard. We also want to dig further into some of the nuances of how those existing hybrid service delivery models function at other counties. Would really like the sort of good, bad and ugly descriptions from, from maybe the municipal planners or economic development officials with respect to the opportunities that a hybrid service might offer and some of the pitfalls or challenges that we might want to be thinking about even at this very early stage. Once we have a better understanding of who might be in principle, we could start to build that staffing and organizational chart in that regard to help everybody understand what that might look like. And again, that leads directly to those service delivery standards. We would of course work with both county and municipal finance staff, as well as IT, HR, clerks and legal staff to further cost out the matter, or further cost out the model, sorry, and dig into some of those detailed questions that were shared by municipal staff and municipal councils. So getting into things like emails. And so if some of those emails are records, where do those records get stored? Do they get stored at the county level or municipal level? Getting into, as Randy mentioned, some of the agreement matters. So if your municipality has approved a site plan application and there's a site plan agreement that's needed, how is that being reviewed by, say, the hybrid planning department and internal agreement staff or legal staff in that regard? There are similar considerations certainly with clerks and human resources in that regard. And so internally, we've been referring to this hybrid service delivery model as a bit of an onion and there's multiple layers to it. And maybe we've, we've investigated some of the top layers at this stage, but we really need to dig into the core of the onion, if you will. One of the other things that would need to be looked at, if we are looking at centralizing some of these application services, is potential updates to county fees and services bylaw, as well as updates to some of the participating member municipal fees and services bylaws in that regard. One of the things we've talked about in this regard is that the application fees would be coming to the county to help fund this centralized service delivery model. But there might still be the need for municipal application fees to fund some of those other internal staff resources, such as your public works or engineering staff, that are an integral part of reviewing development applications. And as I mentioned earlier, we'd certainly want to investigate the transitional matters and the timelines for the potential implementation of a hybrid model if there is direction to proceed. With respect to the next steps and those in-principle support motions, we've been looking at this the whole way along as having a certain critical mass of municipalities in the county working together to really achieve some of those benefits that Randy had previewed through his slides. And so if after May ninth, we only get a very limited support for the hybrid model, then staff might need to evaluate our options to see if there is that critical mass to still achieve those benefits, or maybe there's another model that needs to be further explored, or maybe we need a bit of a pilot program in that regard. Should we be in a situation where there's no support for a hybrid model? Then the status quo will continue at both the county and municipal levels and staff can continue to focus on some of those planning process efficiencies that can still be achieved again at both the county and municipal levels in that regard. So with respect to some of the financial and resource implications, again, we don't have those detailed financial costings just yet, but we look forward to digging into those further once we have responses on those in-principle municipal support motions in that regard. And those further memorandum of understandings are where we're really going to dig into those service levels and those service levels will of course have a direct impact on the financials. There's nothing in the twenty-two-five county budget for implementation of a hybrid model in twenty-two-five. And at this point, as I mentioned, we don't have a firm timeline for when such a model would be implemented. As such, if we're looking forward to our own county and your own municipal budget processes leading into twenty-two-six, there might need to be some money set aside in twenty-two-six if that is the approved, if that is the supported timeframe for starting to implement a hybrid service delivery model. If we get into a situation where not all details are known, but we're doing some early work in twenty-two-six, there might need to be some interim funding considerations or maybe some transfer payments between municipalities and the county to look at the early phases of rollout of the model in that regard. And then, as I've noted, we would continue to get, dig into the IT, HR, clerks, legal and other staffing considerations that would be associated with this model. With respect to the hybrid services delivery model, one thing we really want to look at further and give both municipal councils and county council a better idea of is the relationship between those participating municipalities in terms of funding this model, but then also the relationship between those municipalities that have opted out of the hybrid service delivery model and their service delivery standards with respect to not, not being a direct funder of the model in that regard. So those are details that we need to look further into. And so with that, I promise I'm almost done. You can see the motion up on your screen, both Randy and the warden have touched on the motion, but again, we'd just like to reiterate that we're not looking for a decision today on yes or no with respect to the hybrid model. What we're looking for is some early feedback and some direction to send this back to our member municipalities, such that they can have good wholesome discussions on the model. And so with that, that's the end of my presentation. Madam Warden, maybe just before I turn it back to you, I'll just touch base with Deputy CAO Schertzur to see if there's anything else he'd like to add in this regard before we open it back up.
I think you've covered it well, Scott. Thanks, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you Director Taylor and also Deputy CAO Schertzur as well. So yes, so the motion that we have moved and seconded to put on the floor for consideration is one to receive the report. So in a moment, we'll open it up for questions that people may have about clarifications so that they can take that with them as they continue to have a discussion back at their home municipalities. This is the opportunity with our staff available to answer those. If there is a specific question regarding the slide, it would be helpful to us if we knew what slide number or what the slide title was, and then that way we could put it back on the screen for everybody to follow through. So that is, that is what we are doing. We are receiving the report and we are also considering sending correspondence to each of the municipalities to ask. And as Director Taylor and Deputy CAO Schertzur have said, even for a response to come back from municipality saying that they are in-principle supportive of a hybrid model, it is not a commitment at that point. There will be a later process where there'll be an opportunity for each municipality to do an opt-in or opt-out. So that is what we are considering. So any discussion should be on questions and clarifications for staff so that we have all the information together here as a body of all of the municipalities gathered together. We have the same information and here are the same answers to the same questions. And then, and then the consideration should be about sending that piece of correspondence to the municipalities. We should not be engaging in at this point in time a discussion on opinions about whether or not we think this is a good idea or not a good idea. This is an opportunity to get all the information provided and to consider the decision to be made whole to, as a whole together is should we send those letters out to the municipalities asking them to declare, to discuss and declare their in-principle support for a hybrid model. So with that, I do have, I can see one hand coming up and then I will ask those who are in chambers with the clerks, if the clerk would just use a hand raised at any of the nine municipalities, if they wish to gather a question and answer of somebody who is not directly logged on. So with that, and oh, it'll be helpful too, just for the benefit of the seventy participants that we have here online today, please introduce yourself before asking your question, introduce yourself, your position and which municipality you're from. And with that, we will begin with Council McKinley.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Warden. So Town of Blue Mountains Councilor Sean McKinley here. Thank you, Scott, for your presentation. I just, I wanted to ask one thing and I'm not going to, I'm not going to stray from the matter at hand, just that there's, and I can appreciate you have a long list of information to gather, but one, one key piece that I did not see that maybe got missed or like wasn't sent in, but I'm going to ask it now, maybe to add to your long list of work. What about the pay equity part? Like what about the, what is the, what is the county's grid? And what are the, all the pay grids for all the appropriate municipalities that are in, that are in the county? Does that make sense, Scott or Mr. Taylor? Because quite frankly, we can't have, we can't have the county, you know, you can't obviously, if you're going to absorb staff from other municipalities, you can't pay them less. But we also want to maybe work together not to be stepping on each other's toes, to be paying outright more than what the next municipality is. Does that, does that ring through or Mr. Schertzur, whoever, whoever wants to take that?
Okay, we'll go to the Deputy CAO.
Yeah, thank you and through you, Warden, and thank you for that question, Council McKinley. We've, as you noted, it will be part of that further investigations. We did some initial investigations as Scott noted earlier. Our Director of HR has had discussions with each of your municipal HR staff, looking at making sure that, you know, if there was any movement towards this proposed model, that if staff were to be, then become county staff, what does that pay grid equivalency look like? And from a general perspective, what I can say is that there will be at least the same amount of pay. uh that would be uh offered and provided to based on what's currently being provided uh to those staff today. But again, we'd have to dig that into that further, recognizing that was twenty twenty four analysis. Uh so we'd have to look into the twenty twenty five numbers just to confirm that.
Is there a follow up, Council McKinley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. Yeah, just to be just to be clear, Mr. Shirtsir, I can appreciate that. I just mean that to make sure to do a full analysis of the pay grids of all the municipalities. To ma- is that okay? I see you nodding. Thank you.
Yes, yes. So that was looking at all the pay grids of all the municipalities as well as current county pay grid. And and so that analysis was done in twenty twenty four numbers. Uh we just need to confirm in twenty twenty five numbers, but for the most part, it looked looked positive.
Okay, thank you very much for that question and for that answer. I'll look, I do not see any further virtual hands. Uh here comes one. I'll go to West Gray. We have Jeffrey Shea from West Gray, and please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Uh hi, Jeffrey Shea, West Gray councillor. Um I just wanted to ask the uh county staff uh how common this model is across the province. Is this a direction that is becoming a best practice uh in this industry? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to answer that from staff? Director Taylor.
Uh thank you, Madam Warden, through you, and and thank you for your question, Council Shea. Um when we first started looking into this uh this approach uh earlier on, uh early last year, um we we had done a survey at that time of of all the counties across the uh across the uh across the province in that regard. And I think we had about nineteen responses, and and what we got from that was there was really uh sort of three models that were emergent across the county, so there across the province, sorry. So there was a model similar to what Gray currently has, where you had planners at both the county and municipal levels. Uh there was the the centralized model, and so the best local example of that is Bruce County, uh where technically you only have county, you only have planners at county level, and they serve both the county and member municipalities. Uh and then you had uh the the hybrid model, which is what's currently being investigated. And as I said in my presentation, um the 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 most local example of the hybrid model uh would be Wellington County in that regard, where you have some municipalities in Wellington that are only served by the county planners and some that are served by by uh local and county planners. So I don't know the exact breakdown of how many municipalities uh or how many counties and municipalities across the province use a hybrid model versus how many do not. Um but it's 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 certainly a model that's out there, and I can say that, you know, I'm familiar with a number of municipality or number of counties that do. Um it's certainly something we could look into as part of the further research. But one of the things I'd highlight here, and one of the the early impetuses for investigating this model that I think Deputy C O Shirtsir touched on in in his presentation, is uh the staffing challenges that we're seeing for planners across the across the province. And and simply put, most municipalities and most counties uh can't attract the staff they need because there's more planning jobs than than planners in the province right now. Uh and and so one of the benefits to potentially that hybrid model is is the ability to grow talent from within uh and the ability to potentially attract staff to to a a a larger um grouping of planners that might be more attractive to some. So rather than being a single incumbent. Um so just to to loop back, we we will certainly investigate further in terms of the other counties that offer this hybrid system, and we can provide more detailed answer on on sort of the exact breakdown uh at the time of a future staff report in that regard.
Okay, thank you. And is there a follow up to that question? Okay, thank you. So next we'll move on to the Deputy Mayor of Southgate, Barbara DeBreen.
Thank you, and through you, good morning, everyone. Uh just a question for consideration. Should this go to the next stage? I would imagine it's not something that I um expect an answer at this time. But if a municipality opts in, will consideration be given to an exit clause should the new model or the hybrid model not be serving its local residence residents as it had been anticipated? So in a joint services model, is something to consider in how? If if it's not working out, is there an exit clause? And to follow up Counselor McKinley's question about wages, in determining a an appropriate wage or an appropriate salary and benefits, municipalities don't currently follow what other municipalities are paying their roads crews, uh their planners, their clerks, that very, or even their counselors for that matter. So I'm I'm, it'll be interesting to find out where that that balance lies uh where you are asking or where we're we're expecting that we can't offer more to to attract talent. Um that's just a a question for consideration at a later date. Thank you.
Okay, um with uh any, we'll go to the Deputy C O.
Uh thank you, and through you, Warden, and and thank you for those questions, Council DeBreen. Um those will be part of, no doubt, the the next steps since part of those uh detailed investigations um based on uh previous discussions, both with the C O group as well as uh internally. Here with staff is is ensuring that, you know, there's those proper communication channels as part of that M O U. Just making sure that if they're, obviously the service level expectation is being spelled out in the M O U, but making sure that we have those those check-ins to make sure that it's working and meeting expectations. And and we hope that through some of that, uh those discussions and conversations, if there's any adjustments that need to be made, we can make those adjustments uh to meet those service expectations. So we hope it doesn't get to a point where we're uh where where folks have to use an exit clause. But no doubt with typically with any type of agreement, there would be some sort of uh exit clause, so to speak, and and proper notice and and a time period too to do so. Uh so that would be part of the the discussions for sure. And and just going back to the wages and benefits, and similar to the question earlier from Council McKinley, yeah, that will be part. We've done some initial investigations. We think overall from from a uh both wages and benefits perspective, it's pretty comparable. Um uh or maybe a slight uh slight difference or increase on on say the wages side, some some slight differences on the benefit side, but for the most part, it's pretty comparable. And uh but we can bring back some of that further information again, once we dig into it to make sure and confirm twenty twenty five uh numbers and benefits that are currently being provided.
Follow up? Uh yes, a follow up to uh Deputy Mayor DeBreen?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Uh just to that point, if uh if a individual lived locally to a municipality and was then being transferred to Owen Sound, I would expect that the compensate, they they would be losing if the wage was the same in Southgate. Now they have to travel to Owen Sound. So those are the nuances of that investigation, and I appreciate that staff is is very sensitive to that and finding the right balance. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we'll move on to the city of Owen Sound, so I will look to Madam Clerk of Owen Sound.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Middleborough would like to make a few comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Um my question is uh for municipalities uh who do decide to opt out. How is the funding model going to be set up? So my concern would be if the city of Owen Sound decided to opt out because we do have an existing planning department that is relatively fully staffed. How can we be assured that, let's say, three opt out, six opt in, and the county has to hire more planners, that your costs are going to go up? We're fully funding a planning department here in Owen Sound, that we're not going to also be paying for an increased planning department at the county? So would it be funded through application fees and the municipalities using the service? How can we be assured that we wouldn't be paying double?
Okay, we'll go to the Deputy C O.
Uh thank you, and through you, Warden, and thank you for that question, Council Middleborough. Um so again, that's part of some of those next steps in terms of those those investigations, in terms of who's opting in in principle, and then digging into some of that, those financial details and looking at what that financial model will look like. Again, through uh early discussions on what it could look like. Um one is, Scott noted, is that we would need to update our county fees and services by law uh based on as well as um updates to probably the municipal bylaws that are participating in the hut in the model uh to to ensure there's alignment there, uh to ensure there's if there's fees that are still required to be collected uh to to support services that are still provided by the local municipal staff, that those are covered through your municipal services bylaws or fees bylaws. And then uh you know, a good chunk of the revenue from at least on an average basis uh for each applications that are processed by the county staff uh being providing those services both at the county level and the and the municipal level. So those those bylaws would need to be updated. We think, you know, a good chunk of that would cover some of the fees, uh but not all the fees. And so we anticipate that those municipalities that would opt in uh would have to pay uh some sort of fee to to uh provide those services uh to those municipal, to those municipalities. Be very similar to, uh we have G I S services that are currently provided uh to to our municipalities, six of our our nine municipalities, uh where again uh fees are are provided from the municipalities to the county in order to provide those services back to the local municipalities. Um we don't know what those numbers will look like, and that's that's part of those next investigations. Um in terms of those that opt out, um it would, we think it'll just remain status quo in terms of what you currently are paying your your uh or or budgeting for to provide your services at the local municipal level and and the equivalent on the county side uh to provide, continue to provide those services in a two-tier system. Um so hopefully that answers the question, but we, again, that's part of the next investigations that we'll have to dig into further.
Okay, let me go back to the city of Owen Sound then for either follow up or a any additional questions before I move down the other raised hands. So uh back again to you, Madam Clerk at Owen Sound.
Through you, Warden. Counselor Merton has some comments.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, and through you, Warden. Thank you for the comprehensive information that's been sent to us. There is a lot of words and a lot of text. Is it possible to consider a planning process mapping tool that helps to guide us visually through hybrid as well as status quo? And then consider flow charts and decision trees as we move through this to be able to get a sense of the flow? We often have heard the words we need to look at, but I'm wondering if there's a way to also add to the the tools that you're currently using. Thank you.
Okay, Director Taylor?
Thank you uh for that. Through you, Madam Warden. Uh thank you for your question, Council Merton. Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Um as as planners, sometimes maybe we tend to rely too much on on long text explanations where where a graphic would would maybe be much simpler. Uh so simple, s- s- as part of those further investigations, we could certainly uh sit down with the the potential participating municipalities and and dig into what their existing processes look like. We externally have some idea of what those processes look like, but there might be other things happening behind the scenes that we're not necessarily aware of. And also compare and contrast those with our our own internal county processes and put together some diagrams to help both municipal councils, but also the members of the public or developers understand uh what a process might look like under a new hybrid model versus uh how those applications would be processed under the current model. So it point well taken, and it's certainly something we can invest time into developing uh with those potential participating municipalities as as we go forward here.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk of Owen Sound, is there any follow up or any additional questions?
Through you, Warden. We have no further comments from within council chambers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to the Deputy Mayor of the Town Blue Mountains, uh Deputy Mayor Bourne Young.
Uh thank you, Madam Warden, through you, and um it keeping in in line with the comments from Owen Sound, especially um Counselor Middleborough. We have a fully staffed planning department. Um one thing, uh with the added pressures coming to the, if this hybrid model does go through, um is there thought, as you're relooking at the entire planning structure, about maybe subdivision approvals and maybe putting things more back on to um the lower two municipalities that are that that can handle that or have the, so there's less replication at the county level to the local level? And that could save efficiencies both in human resource time and fiscal um time from the from the development community, if you see if you see where I'm going with this. So there may be opportunity to, if we if one or two pull out and and stand alone, to give them more responsibility. Uh just a thought process on that, uh Scott or Randy?
Okay, Director Taylor?
Uh thank you, through you, Madam Warden. Thanks for, thank you for your question, Council Bourne Young. I'll maybe take an initial cut at this answer and and invite Randy to join in too. Um so there was a staff report done uh in under the last term of council um that investigated uh this notion of of further delegations uh from from county council to uh member municipal councils. And certainly subdivisions and condominiums and part lock control bylaws uh were 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 uh the main part of the subject matter covered in in that report. Uh certainly, uh some neighboring municipalities, some neighboring counties have already delegated uh those approvals. And as I noted earlier, Owen Sound already has those approvals uh stemming back from when they were a separated municipality from the county. Um so so the recommendation in that staff report was that if a municipality is interested in exploring those delegations further, we requested a motion from the municipal council saying, yeah, let's chat about this further, we're interested. Um because it's quite a process um sort of administratively uh to 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 delegate that. You know, the the actual passing of of the bylaws, so to speak, by the 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 two respective councils would be maybe the relatively simple part. Uh but getting into the transfer of those files and records management and what happens to to files that were already in process and everything else, uh that takes some time. And so when we drafted that report, uh we leaned heavily on the county Simco at the time, who had delegated uh subdivision approval to most of the municipalities. And and they were quite candid in sharing, you know, the municipalities that were the early delegates in that regard uh went through an abbreviated process that maybe wasn't the best process uh versus they learned some lessons along the way and 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 had some some great suggestions. So certainly um from staff's perspective, the potential for delegation is is still definitely on the table. Um we'd be happy to chat about that with uh with municipal staff or with municipal council in that regard. And if municipal councils see fit to pass a motion to to consider requesting that delegation, uh then we'd look at uh at entering into a a similar M O U uh spelling out the terms of that delegation. But certainly turn it over to Deputy uh Shirtsir, Deputy C O Shirtsir, if he has any further comments there.
Yeah, through you, Warden. I think you've covered it well, Scott. I think, as Scott indicated, I think that that option is still on the table. It's part of the overall umbrella of potential planning efficiencies uh that could be considered. And we're happy to have those conversations and discussions uh if municipalities are interested in looking uh at delegating approvals uh to the local municipalities uh to look for those potential efficiencies. Happy to have those discussions.
Is there a follow up? Yes.
Yeah, just as a follow up. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Madam Warden. Um yeah, no, I I read the report, then I know that report, and Owen Sound, when they separate, I have I have all that. I'm just wondering from the people like yourself, um you know, with Scott and Randy, the positions that you are. I'm more thinking about the, it because if you take on more work, you're gonna need more staff and that. Do you think that would help alleviate pressures as well as? I know we could request it anytime if that's something that we choose to do, and I'm not saying we are. I'm just putting hypothetical. Do you think that's an opportunity for um to relieve some pressures of the, as you take on more planning? It was more of a, was more of my question from the experience that you have in your two roles.
Anything further?
Uh through you, Madam Warden. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I misunderstood your initial question, Council Bourne Young. Um I think it's something that could certainly be investigated. Um one of the thoughts under either a centralized model or now a hybrid model is is that collectively, the county and member municipalities wouldn't necessarily be taking on more staff, um but rather it would be a consolidation of staff. So if municipality X had two planners and that was a participating municipality, uh those two planners would would come up to the county. And as as Randy highlighted, um one of the benefits of of sort of that consolidation would hopefully be reduced duplication. And so so for that fictional municipality X, if you had a a subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment application, uh then it would be one county planner under the new model reviewing that um rather than having a county planner and a member municipal planner uh also reviewing that. So we think there could be some efficiencies there. Uh and and so, you know, as much as the county might be taking on more responsibility, um we'd also have more bench strength, so to speak, to do so because we'd have those those participating municipal planners, um some of which are 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 very, very experienced and 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 bring lots of of uh interesting experience to the table. But certainly um we weren't looking at this model um to 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 be the end of the discussion on efficiencies. And so if there's further efficiencies to be found, whether that's in improving existing processes or whether that's in looking at those um sort of opt out municipalities and and how those structures work between the county and member municipalities, we're definitely open to exploring that. Um everybody's got plenty of work on their plate. Everybody's got plenty of work on their plates. So if there's the opportunity to to shift some of the work on their plates, both at the council and staff level, speaking purely as staff, I I would definitely be interested in in exploring that further.
Okay, thank you very much. So next we'll move on to Mayor Kentner from Meaford.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Warden. I first want to just simply thank the county for the ability to keep our options open throughout this entire process. And I think that's an excellent model for the future because hopefully we will be looking at some efficiencies that we can develop between the the two levels of municipal government. And I think that, as I say, it would be a you've got a great template here now for going forward on on other efficiency projects. But I just want to say it it's not looking like this is a cost free transition to the hybrid system. And so you know, it it would be nice if it if we could see some economic efficiency, you know, from the get go, but it's not looking that way. And so I'm just going to suggest that it we could really benefit from seeing the numbers crunched before we actually had to, you know, make a final decision on this. And that's that's my input. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll put that in the form of a question to, yes, Deputy C O.
Yes, and thank you through your word. And thank you for that that question, Counselor Cutner. And and for sure, we that's that is part of the next steps is to crunch some of those numbers further. Part of the the request to identify at least opting in in principle is to then be able to dig into some of those financial details and look at what that financial model would look like. Whether it be, is it cost neutral for those municipalities that be opting in? Are there some potential cost savings? We won't know that until we dig into some of those further details. But we would have those details as part of that next steps and bring that back to the this body to be able to make some final decisions then in terms of whether or not you're fully opting in at that stage based on those 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 crunching of numbers.
Okay, thank you. Is there a follow up, Mayor Cutner? Okay, thank you. So next we will go to Counselor Ardell of the Town of the Mountains.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And further to our Deputy Mayor, Peter Borg God. About the delegation approvals, I believe, and it's going back some years because I was the Deputy Mayor at that time. We talked about delegated approvals being put to the municipalities and especially our municipality, the Blue Mountains. And I don't know whatever happened to that discussion. And I know that Owen Sound has had it, you know, previously before they joined the county. And then they kept their own approvals. So we had asked about that. And I'm just wondering where those discussions went and where why they were lost or or how we can get back into that discussion again, because we are at a full complement here. Or we were. And so I'm just looking that we are unique municipalities. We have planners here. We are a busy municipality. And just wondering about that, I we haven't talked about this at the table, but I have the history where we go back and we have asked for it, but we were never granted that. So Mr. Searcher and Scott Taylor were he were, you know, were there when I was there. So if I could have some dialogue about that, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Director Taylor.
Point of order. It's Ian Body in Owen Sound. I'm not sure that's on the topic that we were discussing today or should be discussed today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Director Taylor, can you respond within the context of what we're discussing on receiving your report today?
Through you, Madam Warden. I will try. And if I go offline, please feel free to to cut me off. Further to the the previous answer to to Counselor Bourne Neil, it's certainly something staff are open to discussing further. In in terms of the history of of Gray County planning, there were some delegations made at the time of amalgamation. There used to be a county land division committee at that point. Land Division was was transferred to the member municipalities and and now we have municipal committees of adjustment. The discussion has come up in various forms in in my 20 years at the county, but most recently, like I said, it was in the last term of council. And and we prepared a rather lengthy staff report on this topic. So if if it's appropriate, maybe I could reforward that staff report to to municipal staff and and or the clerks and they could share with their councils and and we could pick this discussion up at a later date for those municipalities that are interested in discussing further.
Okay, thank you, Director Taylor. I think that would be a good idea to provide those who may or may not have been historically here to understand the background context when considering what the current topic is. Counselor Adele, is there any follow up within the context of this report?
No, thank you very much and look forward to receiving the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I do not see any further hands up. Again, I'll just wait a moment to see if any of the clerks raise their hand because they've gathered a question in their chambers. Okay, I am not seeing Madam to our Madam Clerk, I am not seeing any further hands up. So that means that we have come to the end of our discussion for this. And what I'm going to do is first, in a moment, I will call the vote and ask if there are any opposed because some are dialed indirectly. But then I am going to take a moment to check in with each of the clerks from each of the municipalities just to make sure that we have a gathering of any hands that may be not seen here virtually, but may come up in the chamber as this vote is called. So in that case, then I'm going to proceed. I do not see any further hands up for discussion. So I'm going to call the vote and I'm going to ask for anyone. Oh, yes, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. Just before we do proceed to the vote, I just wanted to note that Counselor Doug Hutchinson did have to leave the meeting at at eleven, so he's not in the meeting anymore. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that procedural note, then I will now call the vote. Are there any opposed? Any opposed to the motion that we are considering? Any opposed? Okay, I will just confirm then with each of the clerks. I'll go to Madam Clerk of Chatsworth and C O.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm nothing further here.
Thank you. I'll go to Madam Clerk of Georgian Bluffs.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I am not seeing any opposed from Georgian Bluffs.
Thank you. Madam Clerk of Gray Highlands.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Warden, sorry, my apologies. There's no one opposed from Gray Highlands.
Madam Clerk of Hanover.
Thank you, Madam Warden. There are no opposed from the town of Hanover.
Thank you, Madam Madam Clerk of Meaford.
Thank you, Madam Warden. No one opposed from the municipality of Meaford.
Madam Clerk of Owen Sound.
Through you, Warden. We have no one opposed from Owen Sound.
Madam Clerk of the Blue Mountains.
Thank you, Madam Warden. There are no opposition in the Blue Mountains.
Madam Clerk of Southgate.
Thank you, Madam Warden. There are no opposition in the township of Southgate.
And Madam Clerk of West Gray.
Through you, Warden.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. There are no members opposed from West Gray.
Okay, thank you. Too much habit. Okay, so we've heard and there are no hands raised to oppose, so I will declare that that motion has carried. Thank you. Next, we will go to the bylaw. And for this, I will recommend I will read out the recommendation, call for a mover and a seconder. And then after discussion, we'll do the what we had done traditionally where I'll just simply look for any hands raised for opposed and ask that the clerks do that if they need to represent an opposition within their chamber hall. Okay, so the recommendation is that bylaw twenty twenty five oh one being a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings with with the count with Gray County Joint All Council Meeting held March March twenty first twenty twenty five being acted and passed this twenty first day of March twenty twenty five. May I ask for a mover and a seconder with a virtual hand, please? Okay, so it's moved by by Counselor Allwood, Deputy Mayor, but also Counselor on Gray County. Thank you. And it's seconded by Mayor Carlton, also County Counselor of Georgian Bluffs. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion for the bylaw? Okay, Madam Clerk, I am seeing no hands raised. So if there is no discussion, I will call the vote. All those, any of those who are opposed, please raise your virtual hand. Okay, and this one I do not, I'm gonna just do one more call. Any opposed? I'll ask the the clerks to raise a hand if there's any opposed. Okay, so Madam Clerk, I will declare that that motion is passed.
Thank you.
And that allows us to move on to a motion to adjourn this joint meeting. And so I will then ask for a mover and a seconder. I see it moved by Mayor Milne of Southgate and seconded by the Deputy Mayor of the Town Blue Mountains to adjourn. As we as this just before, while we are in discussion, just before I call the vote for that, I will say it has been wonderful that I thank you so much to everyone who has taken the time out of all of your busy, both council schedules and personal schedules on a Friday to be able to join us. I thought the questions were very helpful. I think you've given staff some good direction in terms of kind of extra information to provide in its in in due process. And we do look forward with that action that we have taken today to send out that correspondence and hear further feedback from the nine municipalities. So wonderful to see everybody here virtually, but I am also looking forward to the number of cross county events that we have scheduled coming up in the spring and summer. So it'll be a pleasure to be actually shake your hand in person, be able to see you in person in the next few months. So with that, then, with no further discussion, I will call the vote. Are there any opposed to adjourning? Any opposed to adjourning? Madam Clerk, I see no hands. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy your day.